All right, I see six o'clock. Is everybody ready to go? Citizens remarks and complaints, anybody sign up?
No sign.
The minutes from the previous meeting, uh, second page. There's a, we discussed this last week about this being forty-five instead of forty.
Forty-five is my first one.
Okay. Forty-five hours?
That's, that's what we had done last week.
Okay, I'll take that and correct it.
Okay, with that correction, uh, commission can accept the minutes?
I make commission accept the minutes with the corrections on it.
My second.
Call favor. Post. Okay, minutes accepted. Okay, next thing on the agenda is correspondence. Paul, you got it, just man in there, it looks like.
There is one, Christian Heritage Week in West Virginia. To the mayors of the two hundred and thirty-five cities, towns, and villages. You are politely requested to join Governor Justice, um, by issuing a memorial, moral, Christian Heritage Week proclamation. Two hundred and eight mayors from one hundred and thirty West Virginia cities, towns, and villages have done so since two thousand and one. If you choose to participate, please send a copy of your proclamation. Also, we'd appreciate a copy of your, um, display of how you put the paper. Please send a copy of yours along with a copy of Governor Justice to each church in your community. Asking that both be read in the congregation on the Sunday before Thanksgiving. And the proclamation is, they need a sign by you if you made it on it. We want it to be done for the next meeting? I guess we'll have to put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah.
To make that proclamation. Carrie, did you get that?
Yep.
We, we've done it last year.
Yeah, we've done it every year. Now we have, dear mayors and council members, I am writing to tell you that Piedmont Citizens' Committee is once again sponsoring the annual Halloween love parade and party. This will be, it's not the twenty-second, but it's the twenty-seventh.
It's been the twenty-second.
Yeah. Be the twenty-seventh this year. Oh, this will be the twenty-second year for the event. It will be held on October twenty-seventh. This year, the parade will form in front of the parking lot of Victory Post, one fifty-five American Legion on Washington Street in Western Port at twelve-thirty P.M. The parade will begin at one P.M. and march over the bridge to Piedmont and then down Ashwell Street and back to the Water Street Park next to Walden Methodist Church where it will be disbanded. The judging will be done in, at the park and then everyone will be served refreshments. Treat bags will be distributed to all participants. Everyone of all ages are welcome to attend and also welcome to dress in costume to be judged for the prizes. We are asking the organization if you could make a monetary contribution to this worthwhile community event. And your all contributions will be appreciated to help to pay the cost of the prizes, refreshments, and treat bags. This has been a very successful, successful event for the past twenty-one years with many participants from all three towns, and we hope that you will continue to support us in this endeavor. Very true to yours, Reverend Harry Colton.
Let's give their story to everyone in Western Port this year instead of making them go all the way over and back again.
Well, they did that last year too.
Well, they used to go down to Maryland Avenue Park.
That's where it was.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, they came back to Piedmont for some reason. Was it last year or the year before then?
The year before.
Back and forth, but something's always been going, been going on at the Maryland Avenue Park.
Oh, really?
On the, at the same time, so that one year they.
I know, a couple times I've been there, they've walked over to Western Port and then back over here. It's been something.
Yeah, it used to be, it used to be their park, then our park, but something seems to be going on at their park all the time, so it might just have to be starting and coming to Piedmont over here. But the Maryland Avenue people like to have them going down the avenue. The older people on the avenue, because they walk from here and then down the avenue, so and everybody on Avenue should just hang out.
Okay, another, uh, bit that, uh, it's not really correspondence, it's personal contact with, uh, T.J. Coleman about the, uh, new sign that they have to replace the one that was stolen and been up. Uh, that's happening at eleven o'clock on Saturday. Also, huh?
It's under even.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, I'll let you unveil it, but we gotta, uh, put a post in over the sign. So it's, that's not, not yet, very good.
No, what I was planning on doing that tomorrow and getting it ready for unveiling Saturday.
Okay. All right, office reports. Anything to report? Who's gonna start going, you wanna go?
Yeah, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, Paul?
I don't have any, but I wanna bring up something.
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned, I love the town, just like everybody else lives in this town. We love Piedmont, and I'm here because I wanna see Piedmont grow. I wanna see Piedmont successful, and I wanna see this place like it used to be. And the reason I say that, I mean, you can look around town, we have a lot of things that need done. Yeah, I'm hoping that you put it in the paper just this way. The city cannot be responsible, the mayor, everybody trying to do all they can do, the city employees and everybody. But I think the town Piedmont, people in Piedmont, we have gotten away from where we used to be. Everybody sitting here loves this town just like I do. There's a lot of good people in this town that love this town just like I do, and we want this town to be successful, we want it to be cleaned up. We have let this town, I'm not talking about the council, I'm talking about the people of this town, we have sit by and we have let this town go down. I mean, there's a lot of sore eyes, I think that the pride has disappeared some way somehow through the years. The pride or something, we've allowed whatever to come at or whatever, and that pride is no longer here in our town. We don't keep, take care of our properties, we don't take care of this or that. I'm just hoping, and another reason I'm saying this, I'm hoping that we can start and start right now, and that is why I'm sitting here, and we can start, first of all, with a cleanup day in this town. And if the mayor, you know, I could, I would do whatever I can, I'll head that up if you want me to do that, and we can talk about this further, but a cleanup day in this town is for starters. And we can start, there's a lot of sore eyes, and our three or four city employees cannot do all that work. That's not for them to do, this is for the people of this community. Clean your properties. Clean your own places, starts right there. Cut your grass, there's no reason for trash and junk to be sitting on the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalks. Clean your area up. I'm asking for the churches to get involved, I'm asking for everybody in this town that loves this town like I do. Let's get involved, you can contact me, contact the mayor, I would love to head that up, and we have a cleanup day. Walk around this town, I'm not talking about pointing fingers at anybody, going to somebody, your yard needs cleaned up or that, no. We all see and we know what's cleaned up. Clean your own areas up, cut your grass, there's no reason for trees and weeds to be hanging over the roads here in our town. There's no reason, yeah, we have a lot of dilapidated buildings. What happened to your building down there is a shame. It's a shame. It's the boards, whoever did that, that should not be. We're better than that. I'm just saying, let's clean up the town, let's try to return some civility, love, and some pride in this town of Piedmont that we all love and care about. And we start that by cleaning up our own area. Don't rely on the city to clean up the town, we can't do it, you can't do it, there's not enough money in this town, there's not enough employees in this town. They're concentrating on the main things that they have to concentrate on, the water, sewage, and those things that are vital, like the blood of this town that keeps the town going. But these things we can do as citizens of this town. It starts at home. If I'm living beside you and your property looks like, I don't know what, come on. Let's restore some pride and some civility in this town, it didn't used to be that way. Let's try to get back, that's what I'm saying, let's get back to that. Have a cleanup day if it's okay with the mayor. So if we have a cleanup day, you want me to head it up, I'll be glad to do that, I'd love to do that. Head it up, coordinate it, and we have a cleanup day. We're gonna involve the city employees, if we can get the city trucks involved, and we can get trash out of here, we could take, get people on certain streets, the churches, maybe even get Westonport's street sweeper and all that, we did that before, we have, let's clean up the town.
And we may be able to get some assistance from EPA.
Any, any place, any place.
They, they've done this before, I know, because they did it in my town. They have a PPOD fund, as they call it, and they'll come into a town, they'll pick, find a place to do it, they'll bring dumpsters in, trucks to haul tires, and it, while that's set up, anybody in town at Piedmont can go there and put their trash, junk, whatever.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
And they'll pay for it to be hauled off and destroyed.
There you go. That's what I'm talking about, and this is just a start. Anybody else got any ideas to add to that, fine, but I'm just wanting to get something started.
I agree with you, Paul.
Something started, and we, no reason to wait for the city employees to clean your area, well, I'm not gonna cut my, I'm not gonna cut this and I'm not gonna cut that, because the city should be doing that, no, we need to be doing that. Let's be responsible for our own areas, our own property. Let's clean up, let's take streets or whatever, and we just go down through here, we don't want nobody to get in trouble, we'll build somebody's property, we don't wanna go to jail. We won't break the law, so let's plan it, figure out what we can do, and begin the process of trying to restore some civility and some pride in this town. There's good people in this town. There's good people here. Uh, I think we've kinda went to sleep, and we've allowed other things to creep in that should not be here, well, let's, let's move those things out of this town. Let's move, I'm not saying run nobody or anybody, no, but I'm, let's return, I'm talking simply the civility, the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Civility. You know what I'm saying, you know, I'm trying to say, we return the pride, that's the word, the pride that has always been here, let's return it. We do that by starting to clean up our town, this is our home. This is where we live. I'm not moving. This is my home, I'm not going nowhere, I wanna clean this place up. You might move down the street, I might move too, beside you, but I'm not leaving town, this is it. Sorry to take so long.
No, that's very good, that's interesting, Paul.
That's been our goal for a long time. I would like to start that.
Make, make blood in here, it make, wakes the people up.
New blood and revive the old blood that we have here. We have good people here.
Oh, yeah.
That have just went dormant and have just sit, and we've allowed.
We've been preaching that, you know what, our mayor comes out, he works on a dump truck, I was out for quite a while right now, I've got some personal things going on that I haven't been able to be out here like I was with the mayor, and I was out here in ditches and everything else trying to help these fellows, okay? And it's more than just the mayor, myself, and the few people that we have to work with.
It has to be.
But everybody wants something in return, well, you know, that's where we're at, we can't always give something in return.
Well, you get something in return, you get a cleaned up town, a cleaned up community. That's all we want.
That's it.
We want Piedmont, you grew up here just like I did, you know what Piedmont was like, they all knew what Piedmont was like.
Paul, you all know. Paul has been working hard on trying to keep the parks and stuff, Suzie's been trying to get these buildings down, Yone just now come on board, she's just now figuring out why she did this. But, you know, this is where we're at, so, yeah, I mean, but it takes a lot, more than just us, it takes a lot of citizens, I mean. But it's the same ones who keep coming out, and then the same ones say, well, I'm not coming out this time because it's just gonna be a handful.
Well, I would ask, because I want it in the paper, I'm asking for the people in this community to step up, to come forward, the churches, contact me, contact the mayor, and anybody that's interested in cleaning this town up.
Yep.
And we, with the mayor's approval and the city council's approval, are, we have to do it. I do a long, long time, I don't remember.
We'll do it.
All the steps you gotta go through.
Do it the way it's supposed to be.
But whatever legally we need to do to be able to do it, to begin a process.
I'm all for it.
I'm asking, they'd be in the paper.
All for it.
And people will contact me, what can I do? Where do you need me? That building over there is.
That's ridiculous.
That should not have happened, apologize to you, I had nothing to do with it, I don't know anything about it, it should not have happened. We're better than that, the town's better than that. Yeah, now you got right around, not because you didn't do it, but another boarded up building in town, and we don't want that, we don't need that. We're trying to clean the town up, and we can't do it when we have people tearing up.
We gotta live here together.
We gotta live here together, so, that's what I'm saying, if you return some pride, some civility, we do that by, hopefully, this cleanup thing, that's all I think.
You name it.
Well, that's a good idea, and I can, we'll put it on the next week's agenda to make it official and, uh.
Pick a date?
Start, pick a date and get things started.
Sounds good.
I'll be, if you wanna take the lead on this, that's fine, and I'll.
I'll, I'll be right with you. I would love to, well, I'll be right there with you, so worry.
Okay, Rick?
I don't really have any, like you said, I've had a lot of frustration with things going on for a little while, I've been hoping to get straightened out soon, but Ernie, he's, he's been doing a fine job, and instead of you, you got the dump truck back up running, uh, you know, trying to thank both of yous because, uh, this week's been a little rough. You know what's going on, and it's not working out the way it should be.
It's coming together.
Yeah.
You know, we gotta be, we gotta be prepared for winter, and we gotta have this stuff, and if we get the rain, there's snow this winter, that we're getting rain, we're gonna need every piece of equipment we got.
That's what I said, right now, like I said, other than that, I, Ernie, you got anything to add to?
Yeah, other than what Rick said about the silver dump truck, it's, it's been, oil change totally went over a bit, and I've put new drive arm on it, all the lakes are working. We've just about got the, uh, Ford pickup truck ready to put to bed on. Also, we had, uh, just here to help to haul two big loads of salt in, we got salt in the building. And I will get ahold of the Boy Silver and EPA and get the information on the PPOD program and get it to you all. Other than that, that's all I got for now.
Suzie, where are you?
Just still working on others.
Anything else? Paul?
Uh, me and Karen and Oliver, whenever, cleaned up a lot, and most that we could, we'll get it closed up, and did you blow up, we need to blow up though.
Not yet, we, Ben and I haven't got there yet.
We got the, we got the compressor hooked up and everything together, the hose that we need to adapt to, the pipes to blow it out, we just need to take it over there and, get it underway, you know? That's putting that CV joint axle in that dump truck took us a day and a half, and, uh, that took a lot of time out of our schedule and breaks on the old truck and this and that, but we'll do it before the weather, before it freezes.
And I'm waiting here back, October eleventh, CUW is the day of caring and sharing, and I asked to have all the benches in town painted and the finished things that we were supposed to have painted before. This should be a nice crew of people if, if I get in on the project, and they'll come in at, from like eight-thirty till eleven-thirty, and I think there's eight benches in town, including the pool.
I think there's twelve.
Is there twelve?
Yeah, that includes the one up on the bank to play.
Okay, I forgot about that one up there.
And, uh, the one that was, was moved from.
What day was that?
When we put the.
October eleventh.
Muffin monster.
Okay, I'm by, in part.
Yeah, so there's a total of eleven of them.
Okay.
Do you want that on unfinished business? Because the day before we begin the next council meeting.
We can, if you want, but like I said, it's just them coming up, I can, we can put that on there for an update. I should know by then if they're definitely coming or not.
Is the dumpster moved?
I haven't, they're never.
Okay.
And, and Phil called, we had the dumpster taken away, since we're done with it.
Oh, do you want your phone off?
Yes.
You do?
Okay.
Well, what about, uh, some antifreeze for the pool, did you get any yet, RV antifreeze? I need to do that all at the same time when we go out with the antifreeze.
I'll grab that tomorrow.
Well, we're gonna need probably a little bit more, we had eight gallons last year, we're probably gonna need more, like ten gallons.
Ten gallons?
It's RV antifreeze.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. It takes a lot for those pipes, but the big pipes that we had, that we had frozen up last week, we didn't freeze up, so evidently it's working okay. That hot water tank that was up high that busted, that was kind of a freakish thing, I don't know why it did it, but it did, so we're gonna, we'll take more precautions with that issue. Okay, anybody else? Go ahead and meet this, anything?
All right, basically, this, this month's consensus, nothing but, just, none of investigations, we've been following up just for the past couple weeks, just trying to keep up the investigations, all the new reports coming out, it's been a little complicated with that, but, um, Chief Cummings today was actually, went to Martinsburg, picked up new equipment for the e-citations. Isn't that one, we ever get a better cruiser out, we have two of them, we can actually have e-citations of both of them, except we're not running around one. And it's basically just continued traffic enforcement, everything's just going good, continuing patrol in the bus stops, nothing out of the usual.
Ben's doing a good job at the bus stops, I have to say, there's been some comments made by people that, you know, uh, you guys are there on the scene and things are slowing down.
That's what Tris and I came to say, we need to tell you that he's got the darned cracked up job. I'm, I'm, I'm there all the time, and I can see what's going on, it's fantastic. Keep up the good.
It's my pleasure, you know, I love this town, I'm not even from here, but I love it with my heart, that's why I'm here.
You planning on getting another car on the road?
We're attempting to.
Okay, good, because once they pass the bus stop, and they come out past my house, they're rolling, okay? I just seen a garbage truck go by this morning, and I guarantee it's going forty. I guarantee it's going forty thousand miles.
We're taking, we're taking some baby steps here in this whole thing, because, oh, believe it or not, all these cars that we, we put on the road for everyone cost us money. And, uh, you know, we do have the makings of another cruiser, and hopefully we may get one donated, is it still in the air or what?
Oh, I've, I've called about five police departments today, actually requesting and asking around, I, I was pretty desperate, almost busting a tear. I'm doing all I can to try to have someone help us out, because, you know.
Well, the Durango's out of the question, or is it?
We're, we're still waiting on the callback for that, but we're still.
Just remember, I like it, Durango's.
Well, we're.
That sounds like your problem, stay away from us.
We're, we're moving, uh, we're moving toward that, and, uh, I'd say in the next few weeks, we'll probably be there one way or the other, so, uh, what Clayton said about the new cruiser, not a new cruiser actually, but a cruiser. So, we are working on it. Under unfinished business, we got the bad buildings meeting September twenty-seventh, uh, two thousand and eighteen at.
Six o'clock at the Legion upstairs.
Okay. And, uh, pending mural on the Philstein Building, which we, uh, have it on, under unfinished business, what's, uh?
I won't have any updates on that until I meet with Shay for the bad buildings committee tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, that's. New business? Coffee with the cups. And actually, there has to be donuts, right?
Yep.
If not, someone's gonna do it.
Is three o'clock good for you guys?
Three o'clock, perfecto.
Like I said, what time are you the bus stop, like, so we can have?
Uh.
Start with Jimmy and then you can come in.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, the, that first bus stop's two fifty, and, uh, the next one is stopped right there.
I got some signs made up, it says, Sue Piedmont National Coffee Cup Day, October third, it's three o'clock, come to the library, meet your police officers, enjoy a cup of coffee.
Oh, you're making me feel special.
I, I get to make you suck chocolate.
Then I got one for Carrie, she can take a picture of it and put it on our webpage, and it says, join chief of police Jim Cummings and officer Clayton Perry for coffee and conversation, ask questions, share ideas, refreshments provided.
Yeah, 'cause I'm glad, 'cause I, I thought you were trying to do it tomorrow, I was like, how's that gonna work, kids are in school?
No. That's a good story.
Perfect.
Kids should be home.
No school kids, what time's that bus stop?
The two fifty's the one up there.
So we can pass, October third.
Like, him right there.
Three o'clock, but we get off with the bus.
I'll leave you to it. Person around, she put it on the webpage, I'll put it on my library page too.
We'll be here.
All right?
October third at three o'clock. Okay. Next thing is, uh, the unveiling of the new and restored sign. Uh, I started to mention this a little bit, but then was really wanting to talk about the post that needed driven in, but the new and restored sign, uh, is gonna be unveiled on September twenty-ninth at eleven A.M. And also the resolution that we had for, uh, Ms. Ida Rea Price Jiliver, who owns the, what's that?
Gulliver.
Gulliver? Is that how you said?
It's U-G-U, yeah. Gulliver.
Gulliver?
Miami.
Oh, okay.
I'm learning a little bit more. It's Coleman and Gulliver's, I tell you.
But anyhow, there's gonna be a little bit of a, an honor session for her also, she was, uh, she was the teacher at Howard.
Yeah, she's the last surviving teacher from our district, which is up there on the other street, everybody knows.
Right.
She's ninety-three years old. She'll be coming in here Friday or Saturday, and we'll be doing something, and we'll be honoring her at our church up there.
Well, also, when we erect the sign down there, there's gonna be a little ceremony there for.
Right.
But, uh, big thing's gonna be at the church.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be, uh, a turkey dinner up there for everyone that attends the ceremony.
I'm cooking all that, so.
Art, yeah.
No, we're asking that anybody and everybody, if you can, please attend, if you can.
Up a man, a man?
Fine.
Up a man.
Yeah, yeah, up a man at the church.
Well, I'm willing to be in on dedicating, uh, both, so, uh, I'll be there.
She's, she's coming from Yonkers, New York.
Also, she was the, after segregation, she was the first black teacher to be accepted at the Kaiser Academy.
Exactly. Look, she's the last up here, and will be the first down to the Kaiser.
Yeah, last and first.
Last and first.
Okay, that about covers our agenda, believe it or not. Next meeting is October the tenth at six o'clock.
Time to make a little handout. On Christmas.
Call the favor. Anyone opposed? Okay, we shall adjourn.